Madam Mayor, recording has begun.
Thank you very much. I would like to officially call this meeting to order. Thank you all for attending. Director Phipps, could you please do a roll call?
Certainly, Madam Mayor. Councilman Goldsmith. Councilman Trolinger.
Present.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward.
Present.
Councilman Jenkins.
Here.
Madam Mayor, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Would you all please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the meeting agenda, and hopefully you all received the email that came out just shortly. If not, you have a hard copy in front of you. Mr. Manuel?
Is microphone not working?
Of course, it starts to work. Yeah, the item that we are requesting be amended is for the legislative action requests that are requested from MML for consideration. The due date, we found, is actually the 30th of June. So we'd need to get this to the to the Maryland Municipal League, excuse me, MML, for this to be included within their, I guess, their docket of items to take under consideration. This would allow for discussion and an explanation to the council if you so deem it necessary for us to make such a recommendation to MML. But this would be to amend the agenda where as item, I think it was four, 5.4. Let me double check my notes. Yeah, it would come up under 5.4, under discussion in the council's agenda specifically.
Thank you for that explanation. Do I have a motion to amend the tonight's meeting agenda to include this for action number 5.4?
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the amended agenda to include item 5.4 for the meeting of June 20th, 2023.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Suck it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel, if you've had a moment to look at the minutes from June 13, I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes June 13, 2023, as presented.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just Madam Mayor, Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. If I could, I guess, add a comment or a question that I had regarding the possibility of another public meeting. I think Mr. Kendrick did provide some information that they might be able to add another public meeting after the design is finished. If that is a minimal to be added to the minutes.
Okay. I don't. Mr. Manuel, do we? Should we amend the minutes to?
Yeah, I think it's the will of the council. If he wants to introduce that as a motion to amend the minutes, then yes, we could amend the minutes to include the language. I believe you were referring to the trail project, specifically the radio station roadside path project, that there be additional public discourse or a public meeting once the design is complete. Is that correct?
Mr. Kendrick did answer in response to my question that there would be the potential for another public forum or public meeting to have the public review the final design.
Yeah. And also, just to, you know, the the meeting is recorded. The minutes are a, sometimes a broad representation of the events that took place. If there's any question, we always have the recording to fall back on. But if it's the will of the council to amend the minutes to include this language, then our Director of Legislative Services can definitely make that happen.
We motion to accept as presented and a second. Either we, so we take a vote on what was presented. I do agree with Mr. Manuel that it is recorded, so it should be captured there. So with the motion that is on the table for accepting the minutes as presented, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye. And any opposed?
Aye.
You're a nay.
I'm a nay.
Mr. Jenkins?
Nay.
Nay. Okay. Motion does not carry, so it is approved. Is that correct? Or dies. We don't even approve it.
The motion dies.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
We don't have an approval of the minute.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I move that we accept the meeting minutes with the addition of Mr. Kendrick's statement about a public hearing for June 13, 2023.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Bryant Ward. Do I have a second?
Suck it.
All in favor, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Director Phipps, if you could capture that, that would be amazing. Thank you very much. This brings us to a portion of our public comment. If anybody would like to speak, please indicate, please state your name and indicate whether you live in the incorporated town limits. And please limit your comments to no longer than three minutes. Do I have any takers tonight? All right, moving on to the next agenda. Chief, come on down.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Any questions for the Police Department's report?
Any questions from the council?
Madam Mayor, I don't have any questions, but I do want to thank you and all the hard work that you and your officers did over the past year and all of the accommodations. You know, that was pretty tremendous for those officers.
Thank you. We got some good work and hard work in folks, that's for sure.
And although I will be, it's going to be a spoiler alert, plugging your June 30 event, maybe you could plug it right now as well.
Yeah, we'd love to. June 30 is our rescheduled Autism Acceptance Event. It'll be going on the opposite lawn as the concert on Friday night on the 30th. We hope to get extra folks to come in and attend and learn about what's going on with our autism community. Our partners from Pathfinders, Social Services, the Health Department, they're all going to be here to tell people who have either folks in their family that have intellectual developmental disabilities, or on the other end of the spectrum, if they have dementia or Alzheimer's, about things like Project Lifesaver that's available in all three counties and in La Plata, and about other services that are offered to families that have folks with special needs.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
All right.
Thank you for your hard work. Next on the agenda is Director Harrington. I see you online up there. Do you, does anybody have any questions for Director Harrington? Go ahead, Councilman Jenkins.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Again, thank you for the report. Again, comprehensive and well done. Under your report called GIS Maps, you're indicating you're updating some information. And one of the items is mentioned is development and permit review. Does that mean that there'll be some process to locate on the GIS maps different projects and where they are in the development process?
So not in the interactive map that we have, but I'm hoping to have something that I can utilize with presentations or with my monthly reports to have on hand to kind of show where development is occurring. When we move to our new permitting software, I believe that that is something that will be available once we have the public portal portion open to the public.
So then the public will be able to see visually where these different projects are.
Ideally, that's what we're hoping for.
Great. Thank you very much. That's good news.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Director Harrington, and Director Stahl.
Good evening.
How are you?
I am well. Well, first thing that I want to say before we open the floor is thank you very much for all of your hard work on late nights, right there by the maples. And doing it at night, I know that it was, it's very dangerous anyways, but it limited the amount of activity going on during the day. So I know it was late hours for your workers, but thank you very, very much.
It is. But you know, the thing is, is that in trying to minimize the impact to our business community, it's very important that we do that. And where we can, we try to do that. And the nice thing was, we were able to turn, we turned the water off around 9:30 that night, and we were able to turn it back on around 2 o'clock in the morning. And so, and then we finished up about 4:30. So it was a long night, but it really did replace a lot of very aging infrastructure there. And so we had been planning for it. And it's nice, we can have everything preset, ready to go. And a lot of hard work by the guys. It's not, not easy to function the rest of the week after having been out all night, but it's one of those that you just do it. That's what we do. And appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
I appreciate you. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Again, Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. If I could just add in your comments, Madam.
Madam Mayor, that I also thank you for not only this effort, but the continuing efforts to inform the public of different projects as best you can. So you give them advance warning, at least some notice. So it's, and I know that these projects are at the mercy of the weather and supply chains, whatever, but it does help our citizens kind of plan around that. So thanks for that, this and continuing efforts.
We will continue to try to do that where we can. It's not always possible. But, you know, our team is really pulling together and I think trying to work with with our PIO and with the Finance Department and with administration to try and, you know, alert as we can and where we can to be able to tell people what's going on. So customer service is always our key. And, you know, water and sewer are two of those things where, to be honest, people don't necessarily know that something's wrong until they run and turn on the tap and, or they flush the toilet and it doesn't go down. And so it's always that kind of challenge. If I could, I'd like to put out a perk and a notice to the public that we are trying desperately to get people to sign up for WaterSmart. And we're trying very, very hard. We have about 3,600 customers, but we only have about 500 that are signed up for WaterSmart. And so we are trying hard. It's not hard. If they have any questions, they can call Town Hall, and we will walk them through it to be able to sign up. But it provides us and provides them, it provides our customers with a lot of data. And they can set up the parameters to be alerted when they have leaks. They can actually set the parameters for what they want to be alerted to. So the bottom line for us is, please sign up. You, as the customer, are the net beneficiary of this service. And it helps us as a town because it allows us to be able to provide better customer service to them because then they get the alerts that they should get. So I put that out there and please, anything we can do to promote that to the general public and just, it's just a matter of signing up. And you will get emails from WaterSmart talking about your water consumption. It will note, you can set however many hours that you want for the water. If your meter doesn't shut off for however many hours that you, if you want it within a 24-hour period, it will send you an email to say you need to have your water system checked. The town on the other side will also come out and do a water check for you if you get that alert. So we can help them and try and identify what the problem is. But we have tried to get away from having to go out and put leak alerts on the hang tags on people's houses. It was taking a tremendous amount of time, and it was relatively ineffective because there were so many. We had to put the hours at 96 hours. So we're not even alerting you until after it's been leaking for four days. And so it's, it's not the best customer service. But if we can get people to sign up, I know the Finance Department would also agree, and we're trying very hard. We're working together with Finance because it not only gives us the ability to provide good data for them as far as what their costs are, but also from a customer service standpoint about leaks, so.
And especially now that people are watering their lawns too, if the sprinkler systems don't shut off. Maybe we could all do a concerted effort to put it out on social media as well to the different homeowners groups that we have. And maybe the town could make that push again. That's a wonderful idea. So thank you.
Madam Mayor. And if we could get some type of narrative, we can put it, give it to our HOA Association. They send it out to our community.
Absolutely.
Some type of language so that they can send it out.
Yes. We have posted the narrative on the website, so it is on the web.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, one thing I will say is, you know, we have discussed more community outreach, maybe at the music on Friday nights, Farmer's Market. I think when our website is revamped, having it more prominently displayed on our landing page, if you will, to try to push people to sign up for the service. It's included in there. You know, it's not like there's an extra cost. And it's, if anything, you know, I had an old cohort who used to say, most people don't pay attention to what affects their wallet. Well, if there's anything you can do to limit your exposure to your rising water bill because of a leaky toilet, the sooner you know, the better. So I think if we, you know, do more of an educational outreach in places like our town events, like I said, the music, Farmer's Market, there's, there's places we can, and then, you know, like you said, the Homeowners Association. One of the advantages we do is have a large majority of our residents do live within HOA-controlled subdivisions. So that may be another way.
Residents aren't on our HOA Facebook page, and I found that out just by looking at the numbers that are signed up. So if we could get it to the HOA Association, they do get those emails and they will look at those.
Thank you. I think Green is even, she can speak to it on her presentation, but maybe even putting something on the water bills, which go out quarterly.
We've done that, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
I just didn't see it. I just looked up the town Facebook. I don't know when it was that we put it out there, what the means were other than on the bill. How did we renew the public information for it? Do we know? Like.
Yeah, I think Bobby said the website, not the, I don't know that we did push it out on social media, but most people received their
Posted it on.
Social media.
Yeah. Great.
Okay.
Thanks, Ms. Green. Thank you. Awesome. Thank you so much. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. And our treasure, Ms. Larson, come on down. Any questions?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Regarding WaterSmart, we are going to put a little bit of our bridge on the bill to say, hey, track your water or get alerts, something. Martha is very good at words, and she's going to put something on there that's going to go out with this billing cycle.
She's the youngster there that's, you know, with the QR codes and all that. And I'm like, that kind of still freaks me out just a little bit. But if it helps, I know it has helped me immensely. I love having that. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Thanks again for the report. And again, the graphics is very helpful. I just had a question, maybe I ought to know, but I don't. So if there's a surplus at the end of fiscal year '23, does that go to the fund balance?
Yes.
And which balances, does it go to the general fund or does it go?
Yeah, it does.
So can I say there?
I mean, if, if there's a balance within the enterprise fund based on revenues were more than their expenses, it would go to that enterprise fund balance. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. And then Director Phipps. Oh, there you go. Any questions for Director Phipps on her monthly report? Oh, ahead?
I just was curious as to the MPIA requests. If we wanted to know the, if like, if we wanted to be able to see the correspondence, like, for example, the clock for Walmart one, you just ask you directly to see a copy of it? Just curious what they were looking for.
For the Walmart one, was a subpoena?
Yeah, subpoena.
Oh, okay. So, so that one, we actually got a, no kidding, subpoena for that. For an MPIA request, we have a page on our webpage where you can submit a form at townoflaPlata.org/MPIA. And you can specify, it's best if they specify what timeframe you're looking at. And if we have public records that answer that, that aren't confidential, then yeah, we can share that.
Yeah, sorry if I didn't communicate that well. How can we, as council, see what's been requested of the town by either somebody doing an MPIA request or issuing a subpoena to the town for documents? Just the correspondence?
Well, I'm happy to forward that to you. It's usually by email, so.
That's.
Okay.
Thanks.
Go ahead.
Thank you. That was about the new town clerk.
She has a special spot on the agenda, Madam Councilwoman, but she's amazing.
Almost like a twin.
Yeah.
I just have one question. Thank you. Councilman Jenkins, Ward 4. Any additional clarification with respect to the amphitheater in Will's Park process?
Yes, Councilman, I am getting on it. That's, that's the clarification.
You mentioned it, and I didn't know whether there's any other updates or any other additional information, that's all.
Oh, well, specifically, I went out with Mike Gan from the Port Tobacco Players. He's a civil engineer by trade and also very heavily engaged in port tobacco players. So he could give me some perspective on how to cite the thing and access to the backstage and what kind of electrical needs they might need and as far as lighting and sound. And it was a, it was a whole thing. So that's underway. I've already talked with our ARPA consultant, and he's approved, or wait, he's, he hasn't authorized anything. That's before you this evening as far as transferring some funds over from a different ARPA project to supplement this one. Just, I'm not going to go on too long about that one.
Thank you. Because I have shared this with the Parking Recreation Commission members this process, and I provided them with a link to the county's latest draft of the La Plata Farm Park as well. I think I carbon, I think I copied you on the email.
Yes, sir, that's fantastic. And I'm so glad that it's all connect, interconnecting.
Yes. Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. We'll see you back here in a second. And Director Kennedy. Any questions for this very busy, all of them, or all of you guys are busy, but kind of now just forging the way on something new. So that's exciting. Any questions?
Thank you, Madam. Just thank you. I'm excited about all of the things that you're doing and the fact that you're sharing it. It just gets me really excited. So looking forward to a lot of the outcomes. And I did have one question. When we started in 2021, everybody was short-staffed. Public Works was short-staffed, Police Department was short-staffed. Where are we now in terms of staffing? I saw 4% for the total year, but that's subjective based upon what the numerator did.
Yeah, so the 4% is the turnover. So we haven't had any, for a couple of months now, we haven't lost anybody. So we've got, I want to say, four positions that we're looking for right now. Senior Planner is slow. We had a little bit of a strong start when we put it out. That's kind of trickled down. So I'm trying to brainstorm some ideas to reengage that. And I have access now to our Facebook page, so I can push that out a little bit more on social media and LinkedIn. And then we have recently posted the grants procurement position. And I believe I have Fleet Mechanic we're working on. And also, we are doing interviews the end of this week for Public Works. So we're, we're getting there.
That's great.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Again, thank you for the comprehensive report, and I would echo Councilwoman Bryant Ward's comments. Thank you very much. And I also want to compliment you for when, in your report and you're pursuing this palacity system. And you referenced the strategic report or our strategic plan. Thank you for doing that. And then also, what is the source of funding of that program? I mean, it's not really expensive, but I'm just curious what the.
That's also got its own special discussion.
Jumping ahead.
Yeah, I know, you're the head of the class, but yeah.
Okay. But also the fact that you also documented the savings in your report. So thank you for all of that.
You're welcome, sir.
And I love that you're sharing with us webinars and continuing to add that if in interest, if there's an interest topic that we're interested in, we've got it right there. So thank you for that. That's, that's for a former HR person, never a director. It fascinates me. So it's changed a little bit in 30 years. Anything from you? All right. Thank you very much. We'll see you back here in a second. That brings us back to Matters of Information, the introduction of the town clerk by Director Phipps. Well, look, here she comes again.
Madam Mayor, Town Council, I'm happy to introduce our new town clerk, Linda Grigsby.
Thank you. Welcome, welcome.
Linda brings six years of experience as a town clerk in Brentwood. And so she has a whole breadth of knowledge that I have not touched on yet. So we're looking forward to a lot of great projects up in legislative services. Her organizational skills are going to be hard-tested. Any questions?
Welcome.
Thank you, thank you.
We are excited to have you here. Do you want to tell us anything?
Well, I'm excited to be here. I'm looking forward to helping out any way I can.
Excellent. Any questions?
Welcome aboard, thank you.
I will ease into you tonight. And maybe not so much, but welcome. Thank you so much for doing our team.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. And Director Kennedy, you're up again.
All right.
All right.
She's much shorter than me.
All right. Exciting signs for this. Go ahead and give us any background you want before we open up a question. Go ahead and give us any background you want before we open it up for questions.
Sure. So my elevator pitch is, you know, having come here, one of the first things I assessed was our HIR system, how we're tracking employee information, how that is being communicated to the employees, how they're getting the information they need to better serve their job, to serve their jobs. And, you know, I saw several opportunities here as far as like getting electronic pay stubs and being able to see their leave accruals and requesting vacation and seeing future accruals. So I saw these opportunities and I was like, you know, let me jump on this a little sooner than than I expected. And so I worked very closely with finance and kind of did some research on the the HIR systems that I know that are out there and found one that I thought was really going to benefit the town, not only from an employee engagement perspective, but also to make HR and finances lives a little easier at the same time as well. And that's why I went with Palos City, because I also feel like the customer service that I've heard from my peers and what I've experienced is, is pretty good. And I also know that as we grow, there are a program that I can keep with us that can grow with us for a while before we'd ever have to consider changing it again, if that was the rail, if that was the road that we were down. So I think I'm real happy with them. So.
Excellent. We'll open the floor for questions. Any council questions?
So the savings, yeah, you got asked about the savings.
I mean, the source of funding.
So, so I, again, I worked and talked with finance. What we're, once this program is in, in service and working, we're going to be able to turn off that HRIS side of Tyler that we're currently using, which is not a user friendly program, if you've ever had the opportunity to use it. And then we're also going to be able to turn off our time clock expenses, and so we'll recoup money there. And then that covers about 50% of the cost of this program right off the bat. And if you consider how much it would cost if we had tried to add Palos City service to what we have now, it would have evened out anyway for the cost of some of the features that we're getting. And then on the flip side, that's less easy to see on paper is just the time and labor savings from our team's perspective. You know, I just looked at Martha's time alone, you know, and looked at how much time she's spending doing some of these, you know, redundant and duplicate work between those two programs to try to get them to work together. And I mean, that makes up the other half of our savings for what the cost of this is. So I think in the long run, you know, without even considering Karina and I's time too, we're already ahead of the game. So, and one of the nice features about this is, once it's up and running, I'll actually be able to pull reports straight from the system that show a return on investment. So it, they've, they've done a report with Deloitte that says this is how much it costs to do this function. This is how much time it costs to do this. And then it'll be like, you've just saved X amount of hours at X amount of time. And so we'll be able to see a running total of like, here's what you're saving.
Wow. Well, I would like to first thank Michelle Minor for all of the HR work that she did for years and years and years. And oh my goodness, just hearing what you all are saying, I can't imagine what she's gone through and then finance. Wow, this is going to be easier for finance as well as yourself, but also for the employees. It will be very transparent what they have earned, what they have accrued, you know, are coming up so that it won't be, you know, the department heads may not have to go into that. They'll be able to see it right there, then and there, and know how much leave they have.
And everything is going to be, they can either access it through the desktop or through a mobile app, you know, so they can log in and out right from there. They can check their balances right from there. They can pull W2s and pay stubs, and it's all going to be right there on their phones.
Well, thank you for really doing the research on this. So I'm going to ask council for a consensus to move this forward.
I just have one more follow up question, please.
Sure.
So what is your estimation of to implement the system?
So it's going to cost about, for the first year, it's about $26,000. $4,000 of that is the implementation cost, but the benefit of Palos City over some of the other vendors that I looked at is this is a one time fee. So no matter what modules we turn on and off over time, we're never going to have to pay that again. Whereas other features, if you were like, oh, I want to add recruiting to it, they're going to charge you that implementation fee again. And Palos City won't do this. And then it's going to be, and then, then we're billed per employee per month.
And then, so when do you think it will be actually a working system up and running?
We have a tentative launch date of our first payroll at the end of August in the new program.
Terrific.
Yeah, it's a pretty aggressive. Yeah, and they, they spent four and a half hours on my computer today doing the first data poll of all the demographics of employees to build databases. So we're already, we're already rolling.
Fantastic. Okay, consensus to move forward?
It's a sad.
Yeah.
We're not getting consensus at all.
So I, as I understand it, it sounds like, in a way you've written it up, it sounds like this is a great culmination of different sources all together in one, which is fantastic. One of the things that I was curious about as to the benefits, or at least one of the functions, was geofencing? I'm not familiar with that outside of like the marketing arena. How does, how does that get implemented with this, with our, our folks?
So geofencing, like I said, the employees can clock in and out now with their apps. But what a geofencing will do is limit where they can do that. So if we're concerned that they're clocking in from home and then coming into work, geofencing will make sure that they're onsite or at least in town limits, wherever we want to set that parameter, so they can clock in.
I'm assuming that the training of this is going to be back on Palos City to, to do that. Is that going to be a combination of live and recorded, or are you going to have like one set time?
Right now, my goal is to go to each department. So I'll spend time with Public Works, sometimes the police, and then sometime here with the staff here and do separate man, separate trainings for both the managers that will have a little different access and responsibilities, and then one for all staff employees. Because then their access, of course, is different as a, as just a general user versus a supervisor. So I've worked very closely with our rep. And she's, she's got, they have a huge library of information and data and training. So we're working on something that I can, I want to do it personal. I want to do it, you know, so that people, because I know people are going to have questions because it's a big change. Yeah.
I'd also say that this is not for a recommendation. We are, we are implementing this system full speed ahead. The way that the program is structured, it didn't qualify for the $20,000 threshold. So this project will be moving forward, as Monica said, on a very aggressive schedule. So this is more for information to council to let you know what we're doing.
Fantastic. Thank you for that clarification. Good work.
Yes.
I'm looking forward to having that implemented and seeing how it works. So I see a big smiles from the, from the treasurer.
Every, every time we were in a meeting with Palos City, like, and the more they learn, like, the happier they got.
Thank you for that. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
All right, brings us to matters of council discussion and school seats allocations with Director Harrington.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this is for the FY 2024 school seat allocation cycle. I've attached a, included the executive summary, which basically outlines the section of the town code regarding how we allocate school seats. The town council can set the number of school seats. We do have a minimum that we set for 100. And making sure that we're taking into consideration the information from the Board of Education as well as Charles County Planning and Growth Management and setting those numbers for each fiscal year. So for the, in 2023, we allocated 253, 253 school seat allocations. We ended up issuing 119.8 allocations. And there is an attachment showing that FY 2023 final school seat allocation table. The county has issued 200 single family dwellings, 112 townhomes and 288 multifamily school seat allocations for the Pine Grove formerly Heritage Green Development. And that's in accordance with their Development Rights and Responsibilities Agreement that was renewed on November 16th of 2021. And I've attached the allocation tracking spreadsheet for Pine Grove in the list as well as attachment two. We received the official student enrollment numbers as of September 30th, 2022 by the Board of Education on June 7th, which is shown as attachment number three. It showed that the currently there's enrollment counts were 27,524 students, and that's for the entire Charles County public school system. There are currently 28,255 students that could be accommodated. So they have determined that there are 731 school seats available. That is a one to one ratio from my understanding across all schools. The Charles County Planning and Growth Management provided a capacity and enrollment comparison for the school year 2022 to 2023. And I do want to point out that they utilize 110% of the state rated capacity, whereas the Board of Education only does 100% of the state rated capacity. So their total available school seats were 3,507. And they did indicate that the, their yield factor was incorporated, which is why that number is much higher than what these school boards is. And their packet of information is available on attachment four. So per code, we would look at the population of the town compared to the county. And I utilize the same numbers as last year since it was the 2020 census numbers. And we are still approximately 6% of the total population. So utilizing that ratio, the town could allocate 210 school seats for the upcoming fiscal year. And then I've just provided some information about the schools that are within the town, you know, what school districts that we utilize and the updated yield factors that Charles County has put out for the upcoming school year. So in conclusion, staff recommends the council reviews the reference documentation to determine the number of school seat allocations that we've been made available during FY 2024. And as noted, staff is looking at the 210 school seats per the town code. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have of me. I do see that we do have a member of the Board of Education online, if you have any questions for them either.
Wonderful. I'll open the floor for any questions from council.
Thank you, Councilman Jenkins Ward for, thank you, Director Harrington. This is a lot of great information. And again, thanks for the, working with the school board as well and their presence here tonight. A couple of questions. How many school sites, I forget, how many school sites were proposed in Pine Grove, or did they provide one or two sites?
There's one proposed site within Pine Grove itself at this point in time. I believe that they're still looking for it to be an elementary school, but there is one site proposed within development.
Okay, and then I guess I just have an overall question in my mind, and this is going to come out bad, but it is what it is. Do we really need a town's allocation policy since the county does all this? I guess I just don't understand. I mean, it's good information to know, and we can allocate all we want, but it's really, at the end of the day, it's really up to the school board to, to understand that. And they have their particular school allocation policy, and it's part of their adequate public facilities ordinance. So I guess I'm just asking out loud, do we need to do this or not?
Since we are our own municipality, and Brent, you may have more to say into this, but since we are our own incorporated municipality, we can and do, you know, handle our own permit review, development review. That includes school seat allocations in our own adequate public facilities, which is why we are writing our adequate public facilities ordinance, which will include the school seat allocation policy. We're looking at how we can update that or, or change that a little bit to make it make a little bit more sense. But that is just under our rights, and I believe maybe within our charter to allocate school seats since we are a priority funding area and a development district under the county's comprehensive plan as well as our own.
In the, the county's adequate public facility ordinance specifically does not apply to municipalities within Charles County. So we cannot fall under their adequate public facilities ordinance. As Janine said, she's developing ours now, and maybe that's the time that we look to try to clean this portion of that ordinance up where, as it relates to school seats. But it is a, I don't want to say it's an uncomfortable relationship between the municipality and a county school board, which is funded by a county board of commissioners, but it's an interesting dynamic that doesn't always operate smoothly, we'll say. But the town, and Janine, you could probably give me a date on when the town adopted the, the school seat regulation. It was probably back in the early 2000, 2005. So it's been on the books for, you know, a period of almost 20 years. Of course, once the minimum number is 100, I think last year was maybe the first year that we had ever issued or, you know, utilized over 100 school seats within a fiscal year, a calendar year. So it was one of those things that was put on the books, but was never really utilized up until recent history. So like any program, I think you sort of evaluate it, you look to how do you can improve it. It's continuing to partner with our other governmental agencies, being the county, county commissioners, as well as the county school board. You know, but the end of the day, we're doing what's best for, for the town of La Plata.
Director Harrington, I do have a question for you. We, you are looking for kind of a solid number instead of the very vague above 100. You're looking for us to drill down a little bit more and go with the 6%, which would make sense for 210 school seats. Hypothetically, though, and I hope this never happens, but what if we, and that's per year, obviously, what happens if we exceed that number? The two, if we decide 210 is the number that, if that's what you're looking at for us to decide on a number, 210. If we're at, if someone comes in with a permit and needs a school seat and their number 211 add, do we not issue them a permit?
They wouldn't be issued. First of all, we would look at, to per the town code, when a, when we have, we have the four different pools. So for major subdivisions, for example, we have two different tiers, if it's 50 lots or more or 50 lots or less. So it's only when they have a preliminary plat approval and the, and a final plat has been submitted. Doesn't have to be approved yet, but once it's been submitted, that's when they get added to the school seat allocation tracking list. Then we have two other pools, ones for existing lots that could be developed into residential units and then kind of other catchall category pool. So when I'm doing the plan review and plan approvals, that's the first thing that we're looking at is do you, do we have enough school seat allocations to actually allocate at time of final plat? If the answer is no, then they may have to look at phasing the development where they, they wouldn't be able to move forward with approval. Same thing would happen for those lots that are available to be developed that are already in a subdivision or existing residential unit or, it's in residential parcels. If there wasn't a school seat available, I would not issue that permit.
Here's probably a rather silly question, but why pinpoint 210 when we have the vague language that says a minimum of 100?
That was, I don't know the specifics. I know that that number was created back in 2005. And from what I have gathered in the past from prior mayor Bill Ackman, was that that number, the minimum of 100 was set to cover the debt service for the town's wastewater treatment plant upgrades. So again, that's where we're looking at 20 years later. We probably do need to update this language and look at how we can restructure it. But that's how that was set up back in 2005. And then, like I said, the, it further goes on to state that we would look at the town's population compared to the county's, which again, there's, I understand they were trying to come up with some reasonable, you know, nexus to calculate how many school seats we'd make available. But obviously, the town doesn't utilize all the schools in Charles County. So it's something that we need to look at and address, you know, as we do those adequate public facilities ordinance. So that's where that 100 number came from, and we just haven't updated that in the code. So that's what our code says. We have, we can have a minimum of 100 and then up to whatever 6% of the Charles County population is. So that's where that 210 number comes from.
And that will fluctuate?
Yes.
So the language would be a percentage versus a, like 210 seats, it would be 6% of the available school seats?
That's really, again, we're looking at how that we can move forward. That's what it currently states in the code. It's, we're taking the town's population compared to the county's population. And as I mentioned, the Board of Education shows that there's 731 school seats, where the county shows 3,507, but they're utilizing their yield factors. Since we're using their yield factors as well in our calculations, I took the 6% from the 3,507 number instead of the Charles, the Board of Education number of 731.
Mr. Manuel, what is our role tonight? Are we looking for, to agree on a number? Are we looking just, this is information only?
No, we, I think Ms. Harrington was like a number. I think it's something that we did the same time last year, if that's correct, Janine. So she's presented the number of 210 and has methodology to sort of support that. So if it's the will of the council, we would be looking for you to agree to a number for school seats.
Okay, and last year, Director Harrington, was it 196?
We had, we had allocated 253 school seat allocations, and then we utilized 100, we actually issued 119.8.
Okay, all right, because I, for some reason, remembered 196. And you're, you're comfortable with, if we looked at 253, you're comfortable with 210 for the FY 2024?
It's not that I'm comfortable with it. That's the number that comes out with the percentages. It also, I mean, we're, we're with the water and sewer, you know, the adequate public facilities ordinance. The school seats may not be the bigger issue in the, in the broader spectrum. So it's kind of looking at all different aspects of development. Is there water available? Is there sewer available? Are there school seats available? I'm just following the code and what it states that we're using the 6% of the, you know, the county's school seat allocations to come up with a number.
Okay.
And that's what the number is.
All right. So that is a, I mean, that's a 43 from last year, a decrease of 43 from what we approved last year. So as, as long as there, you're right, it is, there's a bigger picture out there. So we will look at this every year to adjust that.
Ms. Harrington, did the 119.8 allocations, was that inclusive or exclusive of Pine Grove?
That was, so there was only a small portion of neighborhood. That was, um, so there was only a small portion of neighborhood O that needed school seat allocations from the town. So neighborhood K got all of its school seat allocations through the, the county's D R A. Um, and then twenty-four lots within Pine Grove neighborhood O got school seats. The remainder had to get allocations from the town. Um, neighborhood A, which they're working on now, um, has two hundred and thirty-eight townhomes, and they've purchased a hundred and twelve, but I know that they're going to be phasing it. So, um, it's kind of, there's going to be some here, some there. Their first phase of neighborhood Q is exactly two hundred and eighty-eight multifamily units, so that will cover their first neighborhood in Q. So it just depends on how they're, how they're purchasing, what type they're purchasing, and if they'd need anything from the town.
So looking at what is coming down, uh, that, uh, you know, what's very active right now is two hundred and ten going to be, um, a comfortable number?
Again, it's hard to say, um, because of the fact that we have several neighborhoods that have preliminary plat approval, but they have not submitted a final plat. They're not technically on the allocation list. Um, and beyond that, I have conceptual plans, but nothing that's been, you know, approved by the planning commissioner that we're actually moving forward to that level. So I don't have a good idea of how many we would actually need for FY twenty twenty-four.
And are we, um, allowed to amend this should we start seeing things change a little bit?
So according to the town code, we can come back in January after the twenty, um, the school board comes out with their enrollment numbers in September. If there's room for additional allocations, we could amend that in January. I think that's as according to the town code.
So, so what would happen theoretically if we, we gave them X amount that, that there's allocation that the town gives, but they couldn't get allocation from the county? So what happens then? They don't get final foul, they don't get final plat approval from the county or from us, or what? How does that work in theory?
Are you talking about Pine Grove or in general?
Or just in general, just, just for discussion only?
So in general, if it's a development within the town, if there aren't any school seats available, we would not issue approval. Pine Grove is a little bit different in that they are able to purchase a certain number of school seats from the county every year. Um, and some of those allocations will go towards their development, and then if there's any leftover, they would have to see if there was any available under the town.
All right, um, so council, I will, uh, if, are there any other questions for Director Harrington?
Just, yes, just clarifications. So the town doesn't uh, uh, the town doesn't get any school, school impact fees. The county gets it all, right?
That is correct.
So the town doesn't fund or build schools in that sense. Well, I'm just trying to make sure the public has a misunderstanding at times that somehow we build schools and we don't. Um, okay, thank you.
Okay, so, uh, we're looking for a motion?
Or consensus, yes, that probably motion would be in order if you can come up with a number, which one hundred and ten sounds like a good number.
That we approve the two hundred and ten, um, school seat allocations that's calculated by the, by six percent times the three thousand five hundred and seven um, available total school seats.
Second.
All right, and this would be for just for the FY twenty twenty-four? And, um, every year we will go through this process. Uh, so I have a motion and a second. Any, uh, further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much for a, a very entertaining and informative, uh, conversation. That is a tough thing that is going on, and you did a fabulous job, Director Harrington.
Thank you.
All right, uh, next on our agenda is the Melwood contract renewal. Uh, Director Stahl.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, as most of you are aware, uh, we have had an ongoing maintenance contract with Melwood, um, which is a certified or a federally certified sheltered workshop. They work very diligently to provide, um, work opportunities for generally mentally, uh, disadvantaged individuals, and they do a wonderful job with it. I've been involved with Melwood for probably thirty years. Um, we had contracts with them at the University of Maryland. Because they are a sheltered workshop, we did work with them extremely closely, um, for cleaning services uh, in the buildings. Um, uh, they also did mailroom, uh, kind of, uh, opportunities with us. But when I came here to La Plata, uh, one of the things that, um, I knew they did was, um, outdoor groundskeeping. Um, and so I approached the council fifteen years ago and said, we need, we need to, uh, take a look at this because I'm looking for um, some grass cutting services and some facilities maintenance type of services. And the council was very interested in doing that. Um, we have had the great fortune to continue to work with them for fifteen years. Um, it has always been a wonderful partnership, kind of changed here and there. Uh, at one time, we actually employed a number of, uh, trash throwers, uh, from Melwood and gave them the opportunity. Um, we don't do that anymore for uh, number one, because they have a hard time. It, it took a very special person. They had to be, um, you know, I, I had to feel comfortable with them on the back of the trash truck. And that's not something that I'm willing to do with just anyone. We did have some, uh, our last person, Lamont Key was very good to us for many years. Covid kind of, um, they didn't want exposure into their group homes like they had, and so they pulled everyone back. We had to make other choices because, of course, we had to continue to provide service. We, we have a, a part of this contract allows for us to be able to do that. But we just haven't had to do that in, in the recent several years. This is a very good contract. Melwood have kept their increases down to a minimum. Um, the, um, and I think it, it's a very reasonable contract to renew, and I bring it for your renewal. I think you have it in front of you with all of the specifics, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Oh, just looking at the contract with the one point two percent increase, that is very minimal, so.
That's what they've done. It's, it's, it doesn't even really keep up with inflation. But they try to provide a good work opportunity for handicapped individuals, and to be honest, they're subsidized. And so we're taking, I, I hate to say that, but we take advantage of that subsidization in these contracts. But, you know, they like it here. They do a very good job for us. They maintain quite a few of our locations from a grass cutting standpoint, and I, Kelly Burrows is our, um, our foreperson, and she does a wonderful job for us and has for fifteen years, so.
I love that there is yet another opportunity within the community for Melwood to, um,
Absolutely.
Employ. So, uh, any questions, comments?
Thank you, Director Stahl. What, what do you mean by sheltered workshops, and what does that mean for us?
Well, i- in a it, it generally deals with a procurement standpoint. And you can, actually, they have certified what they call sheltered workshops, like, um, blind industries, where they employ, um, blind individuals. In Maryland is, is another sheltered workshop, and it's because of the, um, the handicap nature of the business. But it does allow for you in state and federal contracting to be able to sole source directly to that sheltered workshop. And so it does give you, now, we don't do that, of course. We also haven't gone out and bid it out. But we went through the process in the first part. But because their increases, as you can see, have been so low, we've never gone back and rebid the contract. And Melwood likes to be here. Uh, they enjoy the working relationship that we've had for many years. But that's where it is, what they consider. It's a federal status. And so, uh, it, it is generally for, um, some sort of either physical or mental handicap and creates the ability for people with those handicaps to be able to provide work.
Other, uh, questions? Do I have a consensus to move this forward to legislation? Uh, Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Councilman Bryant Ward, Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
Thank you. You didn't just, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is ARPA funds real, uh, allocation. Oh, double tag team here. That's awesome.
Um, so we've been in discussions with, um, the Southern Maryland, Maryland Archural Development Commission, found out that the county also had provided ARPA funds for the, um, market money program. And we put in thirty thousand for that program as well. But because the county had put in such a significant amount, and the needs of the program really didn't need the town's, um, allocation, we are, um, requesting to reallocate, um, twenty-nine thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and thirteen cents from the Maryland Money Market Program to the, um, Wales Park Trill and Amphitheater, um, which is the remaining balance after, um, tents, picking cable. We had very little expense on this, and we don't anticipate to have much anymore.
You have anything else to add? All right, questions from council?
That sounded kind of scripted. I think she told.
All right, I guess there are no questions. It, uh, I am looking for a consensus to move this forward for, uh, legislation in just a couple minutes. Uh, Councilman Challenger?
Yes, I'm in favor.
Uh, Councilwoman Bryant Ward? Yes. Councilman Jenkins?
Yes.
And I am as well. All right, thank you so much. And then, um, how about you just stay there, stay here? All right. And our newly added, uh, information, L A R?
Uh, Madam Mayor, Town Council, I would like to thank you for amending the agenda to include this on here. This is not anything I've ever done before. In fact, I have only learned that legislative action requests existed within the past month. Um, so putting this together, uh, was, uh, unexpected for all of us. Um, but, uh, you have before you the legislative action request we're proposing to send up to Maryland Municipal League, um, for their legislative committee to, uh, take action on in the fiscal, in the twenty twenty-four uh, session of the General Assembly. Uh, this legislation we're requesting wouldn't benefit solely the town of La Plata. It would be for the benefit of all counties and municipalities across Maryland. Um, the, with the deadline the way it is, and because we don't have a, a, the deadline being June thirtieth, and because we don't have another town council meeting in, in light of the Maryland Municipal League, um, summer conference, this was our last opportunity to bring this before the council for endorsement. Uh, I also understand that in past years legislative action requests did not require a, um, endorsement by the town council, so that was a, an administrative oversight that I just didn't foresee.
Um, questions for Director Pitts?
Is there any, thank you, just for, I'm sorry, thank you for, and I understand the, the need, um. So during the drafting of the legislation, it would be, it would be some kind of a uh, schedule of what each county or what each town would receive in anticipated revenues from the district, or is that's part of the fiscal note once the bill is drafted?
Were, were you gonna, you had an answer?
Yeah, I mean, I can, this, what we are really requesting is that the, I guess, Maryland Municipal League go to bat for us to try to get this enabled in Maryland. Uh, the, the funds that would be generated would come basically as an incentive from the town. We could give people incentives to locate within a, say, if the town had a particular district, let's not say the Town Center Corporation. If we wanted to sort of direct development there, we could incentivize that, and it could be, if it qualified under specific tourism-related businesses, and you define that however you would like within your ordinance, uh, then there could be incentives, and it could be anything from permit fees. Uh, you know, some localities, I had familiarity with working with a tourism zone in my previous employer. And we would even give them credits towards, you know, once again, you're trying to incentivize, so you, you are giving a little to get. Um, so, yeah, we would even look at, uh, the, um, we called it a tap fee, but your availability fee for your water and sewer, uh, things like that to sort of redevelop an area in town. And Kelly and I had looked at a lot of different ordinances from around more so the Commonwealth of Virginia, where it is enabled. And the language is probably less than a paragraph saying that you can do this, and then a state agency sort of oversees uh, the development of these programs. But we would just like for the state to enable, uh, localities to use this as a tool, if you will, to try to promote development within a certain designated area, which, you know, I think we envisioned using towards our downtown.
Correct.
Thank you.
So looking for a consensus, um,
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Ask a couple of questions. Um, so I think it's a fantastic idea, and I appreciate, um, you all for working on this. A question. I mean, it seems so obvious, right, for the state of Maryland to have this, have other municipalities um, brought this up for legislative action in the past and failed. Are there others that are joining us in this venture? Um, submitting this, is there a, is there a, a presentation of some kind or a, a physical in-person request that's done? Like, how practically does this move on from here?
So to my knowledge, I have no further action after submitting this to M M L to, to go to bat for us, as you said. I'm learning this as we go. Uh, as far as other municipalities in Maryland that have adopted it, no, it hasn't, uh, been adopted in Maryland because this literally doesn't exist here yet. Uh, Baltimore City has adopted something similar, a tourism incentive district. Uh, but that involved creating a whole nother agency to oversee that, and it was more tax-based and assessment-based than incentive-based. Uh, Calvert County has a, has a tourism improvement district, but, uh, it's specific only to, or it's a fund, actually. It's not even a district, but that's specific to Calvert County, so there's no benefit to anyone but Calvert County from that. As far as the Commonwealth, the seventy-five municipalities have existing tourism, uh, incentive or improvement districts. Um, so they are enjoying great success with this program, and your rights are, I do understand. It seems very obvious.
That's incredible, and, and, I mean, that's fantastic that, that you're looking at what other states are doing and how to benefit our residents or our development according to our vision for what the town can be, and, you know, this, this can help all municipalities, so this is fantastic. So thanks for putting this together.
And if, if it were enabled, we would still have to adopt our own ordinance specific to the town, and we would have to look at, you know, fiscal impacts. How much can we afford to try to incentivize this area? And, you know, depending on the status of the Town Center Corporation, that may be somebody we would partner with or a Main Street organization. Uh, you know, there, there's a lot of players that could be involved and a lot of different knowledge base that we could bring to the table to try to come up with a, because, you know, the one thing you don't want to do is you don't want to develop a program and then no one use it. So, you know, to try to include, you know, we've had, uh, certain areas where we have developed these nice programs, like the rehabilitation that took place after the tornado. Well, you know, a lot of people have not utilized that, so, and it gets back to education as well. Um, you know, letting people know that this is, letting Realtors know, because a lot of times when an interested business party comes into town, they don't talk to the town. They go to a Realtor and say, find me a storefront. And if they can sort of prop this up as, uh, maybe incentivizing them to locate in our downtown instead of another area, that could be beneficial to our overall development of the downtown. And also just, uh, uh, you know, I think that needless to say, as part of this being added to the agenda, that I think next year we are going to program in a, uh, an agenda item maybe as early as March, April. I know we're in the budget cycle, but to try to see if there, because we want to hear from you guys if there's any legislative actions that you would like us to push forward through, uh, so that, that we can talk about it as a council, because there may be ideas that you guys have. So next year, we apologize for this year. Uh, but moving forward, we'd like to have it more of a open-ended discussion, uh, with the council so that, I don't want to say you spitball ideas, but we can talk about things and we can maybe develop, uh, maybe more than one for next year.
And one of the things that, uh, this, uh, is going to M M L Legislative Committee. So they will have, I know that, uh, Councilman Jenkins and Councilwoman Bryant Ward sit on that, uh, committee, um, this past year, and I have for several years, and it will be brought to the floor for everyone to look at all the members of the Legislative Service Legislative Committee, and they will discuss whether the benefits of it. And it could become a strategic initiative. It could become a priority, and they will have they will have one priority, and they'll have other strategic initiatives. And they look at how it will benefit all one hundred and fifty seven, could benefit all one hundred and fifty seven municipalities. So that's a it's a really powerful thing for the legislative, for M M L to to kind of back what the municipal municipalities see as important. So that's where it goes from on that.
And I just wanted to add to that as well, and making sure that the language, you know, is such that it it is inclusive enough for the all of the municipalities that are represented on the committee understand how it could benefit them. That's the important thing, because if it only benefits one, and they don't see that it could benefit others, then they are more than likely to table it and not, you know, move it forward. So making sure that the language is as clear and concise, and I know you do an excellent job with language, so. I think that's going to be a great idea.
This certainly seems, and I'll and I'll throw a spitball at the town manager. It certainly seems to suggest for future consideration some kind of a economic development agency within town or Main Street or some combination there for further discussion.
Yeah, one of the four pillars in Main Street is economic vitality, which this would fall on.
And 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 I remember years ago researching, I think there's eighteen or to twenty Main Street programs in Maryland. And I remember reviewing those, and I and there are certain, several of them, if not a lot, have different incentive type programs that we could build off of. Thank you.
All right, am I safe to ask for a consensus to?
I think you maybe if you could take a motion to authorize the town manager to forward the L A R two Maryland Municipal League on behalf of the town. Is that good for you?
I like it.
All right. Paint a motion for the town manager to enter into sending this up to M M L for consideration.
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I move that we've authorized the town manager to enter into legislation, the twenty twenty three, well, enter into legis. Submit to M M L the legislative action request town tourism zone created by Director Pitts.
All right, do I have a second?
Sorry.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries, and thank you very much for your hard work on this. This could really benefit a lot of the municipality, so. We'll see where it goes with that. All right, this brings us to the legislative portion of our agenda. Resolution twenty three dash twenty two landscaping and trash pickup services agreement for introduction and consideration of adoption.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Town Council, a resolution concerning landscaping and trash pickup service agreement for the purpose of authorizing the town manager to enter into an agreement for landscaping and trash pickup services.
All right, do I have a motion to adopt resolution twenty three dash twenty two as presented?
Madam Mayor, I would make a motion to adopt resolution twenty three dash twenty two landscaping and trash pickup service agreement as submitted.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, please indicate by, oh, any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. This brings us to ordinance twenty three dash sixteen amendment to the town of La Plata ARPA spending fund for introduction only.
Yes, Madam Mayor, an ordinance amendment to the town of La Plata ARPA spending plan, reallocation for the purpose of amending the town of La Plata American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA Spending Plan, and all matters generally relating there to, and I apologize, Mayor and Town Council.
Thank you very much. We will be seeing that for next month for consideration of adoption. Is that correct? Do we have to have just one more?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Thank you very much. All right, that concludes legislation. That brings us to our commission reports. Councilman Chollinger?
No new report. Thank you.
Councilwoman Bryant Ward?
I don't have a report, but I would like to bring forth a candidate for consideration of appointment. Mr. Robert Hyde has forty five years of public service, twenty five years as a Navy man, and twenty years in federal government. He came with a just a tremendous attitude to serve and total understanding of what commissions look like, and I strongly encourage that we appoint him because he was excellent.
Okay.
Best candidate I've seen in a long time.
Good for, and would he be in the?
Be number five.
So he would be the alternate?
No, he would be the fifth.
Oh, fifth, okay. And are you still looking for?
Still looking for him.
Okay, good. All right, based on your interview and recommendation, do I have a motion to accept to appoint Robert Hyde to the Planning Commission as a full member? I make that motion. That's easy enough to appoint Robert Hyde as the fifth member of the Planning Commission. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. That's exciting. So his first one will be July seventh. Okay. Hit the ground running. And Councilman Trump, I mean, Councilman Jenkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. There I have no report for Park Recreation Commission. However, I do bring forward for to for a reappointment of Vicky Kelly. It's the Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission. Her term has ended, and I have spoken with her. She couldn't be here tonight, but she is willing to serve again as Chair. And I would put forth her nomination as Chair of the Parks and Recreation Commission.
Councilman Jenkins, I have a quick question for you. Are we, we're just reappointing her. We're not assigning her title to chair. So we are appointing her back. We were renewing her commission.
That's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, so I would entertain a motion to reappoint Vicky Kelly, but I would encourage us not to add a title to it, because I think that the commission will appoint her. If so, is that correct, Mr. Manuel?
Sounds good to me.
All right, do I have a motion to reappoint Vicky Kelly to the Parks and Recreation Committee?
Madam Mayor?
Yeah.
I move that we reappoint Victoria Kelly to the Parks and Recreations Committee.
Thank you very much. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. She does a fabulous job, so I'm glad that she's coming back. So upcoming events, I have a list of, we will, several of us will be attending the M M L Summer Conference this Sunday till next Wednesday. I am looking at the weather this week, and I know that this weather system is going to blow through. So Friday, we are going to have our next concert, which is Water's Edge. It was quite unfortunate that the storm hit on Friday right at quarter seven, so we weren't able to be entertained by flipping eyelids. Also coming up, June thirtieth is our U S Navy Band, The Commodores. And then July seventh will be the the band Taboo, and it's also our first farmers, first Friday Farmers Market there, which is going to have a few more vendors there. We've got the summer shows for the kids are going to kick off. June twenty seventh is a Tuesday, and that's going to be Eric Energy. And he is a science entertainer in this area, and the shows are are really geared towards the preschool and elementary age, and they last about forty five minutes. And then on the eleventh, we have Groovy Nate, who creates fun and educational shows using exotic musical instrument and puppet skits. Then something new that they're trying, which I am very excited about, is kids' fitness classes that will be out here as well. And the first one is the Dharma Kids, so it's meditation, movement, and mindfulness. And the kids can bring their yoga mat or or beach towel, and for forty five minutes, they will actually get to partake in some of these yoga and breathing and all of this good stuff there. So that's something new. As the chief mentioned, thirty, June is Autism Acceptance Day from six thirty to eight thirty here during our concert. And Miss Maryland, Mrs. Maryland is going to be there, Nay Jones, and there will also be a drone demonstration, a moon bounce, canine demonstration, and who doesn't like free ice cream? Free ice cream. That should bring them out. Two other things, July first, will the train station will be open from ten A M to two P M, so if you have an opportunity, stop on by. And something that the county does the first Saturday of every month is your household hazardous waste events where you, from nine A M to three P M, you can go. And they have the collection of your hazardous waste so that you're not putting it in our landfills. They take care of that. And if I just give a plug for Port Tobacco Players, they have their last show of the season. And it's ragtime. It's going to be a musical, so that should be going on in July, so please support your local arts. And with that, I move to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much, and have a great night.